All right, seven o'clock, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bill Lopez.
Here.
Laura Madigan.
Here.
Don Kraft.
Here.
Kelly Karaman.
Here.
James Burge.
Here.
Okay, beautiful. We have a quorum and can move on to approval of minutes from September twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill and Kelly. Do we have any concerns or discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, the minutes are approved. Next, we have consideration of claims and sewer adjustments. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Don. Do we have any concerns or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, those are approved as well. Next, we have petitions and comments from the floor. If you have come to this meeting to address the council on anything, now is your time to approach the podium, please. Yes, ma'am. Please approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Lori Francipoles, fifty-one Detroit Road, Porter, in the Dunes Forest area. And I'm gonna shock the heck out of all of you in ten minutes. Because I'm usually the one that's in here complaining and asking for things to be done in the Dunes Forest area. And I have got to say, from the bottom of our hearts, of all of our folks that are out in the Dunes Forest area with the stormwater project that is going on right now is dynamite. We so appreciate it. That area has been needing this for so long. And I know that was a male undertaking by a lot of people. And we truly, truly appreciate it. And until I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Although I do, wait, I do have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Because I do, I truly appreciate the efforts of one of the gentlemen, Mr. Michael Berry. He has kept us surprised of everything that has gone on and what it's taken to get it to this point. So I appreciate his perseverance and tenacity to make it happen, sincerely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kudos. This must be a special meeting. I am also here to do something that probably doesn't happen a lot, but my name is Jim Anton. And with me are Barbara Black, Mark Leacy, and Mr. Trent Albert. And we are all with the Chesterton Porter Rotary Club. And we are also, I don't know what, seventy-five percent of the Fourth of July Committee.
Yeah, you are.
Today, we are here to fulfill our obligation and present to the town of Porter a check of seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars as half of the proceeds from this year's festival. And I also want to thank Mr. Chief Craig over here, our retired but now newly sheen over here. But of course, Mr. Brian Bogueski, who does jump out. I don't know if you folks want to add anything. But we're happy to do it. If you'll let us do it next year, we'd love to jump in again and do it. So start saving your coins and bringing us your money so we can get that.
Oh, thank you Rotary Club so much. Oh, you are the best.
If we can't, don't cry again. I thought we were past this now. If we could get a picture with a couple of you folks really quickly before we get out of here, I don't know if you want to be in, you want to be in, maybe you want to be in this. Sure. All right. Jay should be in too. I was given a specific marching hours.
Marching orders?
Yeah, marching hours. Marching orders to be quick, so we'll be quick.
All right, we'll be quick.
Lauren, will you take this?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Oh, seriously. Yeah, I have got, somebody else do this.
Oh.
Seriously, I don't have my glasses. You guys want to come and turn this on. All right.
I didn't send the letter yet because I got married on something this week.
I was thinking about that.
Very good.
Thank you guys so much.
It's a good song.
Thanks, Brian. Did you guys get the check?
I got my eye out.
Thank you again, and we will be back to start this all over again for twenty-two six.
Thank you so much. Lovely seeing you. Okay, do we have anyone else up for a public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to reports. Clerk Treasurer?
All right, so first, I want to give kudos to the Environmental Sustainability Commission. A few months ago, the commission, led by Tara Duffy, spearheaded an application to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management to become an Indiana Clean Community. There's a lovely sign and flag back there. They sent us lots of goodies. IDAM recently approved the application, and the town of Porter is now officially designated as a bronze-level Indiana Clean Community. The approval letter reads in part, "Thank you for your commitment to environmental leadership. Your efforts help improve the quality of life for Hoosiers, one community at a time." By being an Indiana Clean Community Program member, the town of Porter is distinguished as one of a select group of cities, towns, and counties across Indiana willing to go above and beyond environmental requirements by implementing voluntary projects, committing to continuous improvement, and meeting stringent requirements for membership. This commitment also moves Indiana towards a balanced future of economic success and a cleaner Indiana for all Hoosiers. So, great work to the ESC. I'm sure they'll have more information on that in their annual report. Secondly, we have moved to a new website host that went live last week. That currently means that there's no longer a notification system in place. Michael and I are working on that. I have a demo set up next week, so that's in progress. And lastly, I sent a draft handbook to all of you today. I still need to go back and refine some of the formatting and the headlines, but, you know, the context is all there for your review. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much for that report. Thank you, ESC, for being awesome. Thank you, Corinne, for being, for getting that handbook out to us. I know that was a huge amount of work. We'll read through it and meet, we'll schedule a meeting within the next few weeks. Okay. Our handbook, we can hold an executive meeting to go over our handbook first. And then, if it's agreeable to everyone else, then I would like to meet with our department heads as well to go over it. So, we'll start off with the council members all reading it, working with your liaison department heads. And then we'll schedule an executive meeting first sometime within the next few weeks. All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Do we have a report from our attorney?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Police Department Chief Dickey?
Got a few things. Mike Berry, you're popular tonight.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for orchestrating the installation of our new generator. Our power just went out two days ago, so it's already hanging on. Yep, it works. Jamie, I'd like to thank you and all the guys over there. Aside from always being there whenever we ask for something. I know they were just over asphalting and sealing up part of the drive where the generator was just installed, so let them know we appreciate them. On another note, in reference to trick-or-treat hours this year, five-thirty to seven-thirty, we were made aware of a social media post going around where there was a lot of momentum to have those hours pushed. I believe it was like five to eight p.m. It was just a little too late. We had already kind of solidified our plans, but we are considering that for next year. But this year is five-thirty to seven-thirty. One of the things to note, and I don't know, Jay's gonna talk about it here in a second, but our officers that'll be out, especially when they're going through a neighborhood, they have what's called their cruise lights activated, which is the red and blues, but they're not flashing. They're just on. That doesn't mean they're responding to an emergency. It's just to heighten their visibility if someone should need them or anything like that, just so the public's aware. And my last order of business that I have here is a little bit more in-depth. This is regarding abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles throughout the town. There's a little more to it, and I would encourage citizens to monitor our Facebook page, the police department's Facebook page. We'll do a post that has a little bit more in-depth explanation of this. However, we've been trying to find a way to improve this process over the years. Bill Lopez, myself, and Mike Berry have put our heads together over the last few months, and we've come down to something I think is the most promising yet. In a nutshell, it is going to be a kind of a three-step process. Code enforcement will be sharing a spreadsheet with the police department. We can see it both at the same time. Day one will be initial notice and warning of a violation. Day thirty, if no compliance is achieved by day thirty, there will be a citation issued. This will be with code enforcement. And on day forty-five, if there's still no action taken, that'll be passed on to the police department for the vehicle or vehicles to be impounded. As far as who handles what, the police department versus the code enforcement. Code enforcement is only gonna respond to complaints on private residential property. Anything in the public right-of-way, on the street, private business, a Dollar General, Comfort Inn, that'll be the police department responsibility, so. Again, stay tuned to our Facebook page. We'll have a more in-depth explanation. But to me, it's something that I think is gonna work much better than things we've tried in the past, so.
Could you give the definition of abandoned vehicles, please?
Jennifer, I don't have the actual definition in front of me. There is a state law, and then our town code pretty much echoes what that is. But I would love to put that in the Facebook post as well.
Yeah, because people would need to know.
Yeah, so there's a bunch of different parameters, but the biggest two that we see are, and it's an and/or, is the vehicle's not registered and/or the vehicle is inoperable. Those are the two biggest violations that we see. Okay?
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Park Department Chief Craig?
We just spent last week visiting with all of our ghost elementary school students. Most of them visited the fire station, got a tour of the fire station, fire trucks, drive fire gear, meet recon. As usual, it was a great success, except for the couple classes that didn't get to make it because of the rain, but we'll have that. Want to thank all of the firefighters that took time off work to assist with that, to make that a success. It definitely is, requires a few people to make their experience memorable and get the education point through to them. We have a couple more classes with some preschools this week, but the block of it is done. So again, thank you to our firefighters that helped make that successful. We thank you, well, I know Brian will probably touch on this a lot more than I will, but thanks for the support for the pints that we had recently. And, yes, and we will be out along with the police department just to be seen for our trick-or-treat hours on the thirty-first. Some of our vehicles will run with those cruise lights. Not all of them have it, but those are the big red ones that you can't miss. Those ones will probably be posted up on a corner, handing out candy and visiting with the kids as they walk through. But we will be out also. That is all I have. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Public Works?
Yes, we've been crack sealing this year between spring and fall. We did about five weeks, five pallet loads of crack seal. And we're wrapping that up, so we're done for leave season. That's really all I have. People have been pretty nice with our crack sealing, so I'd like to commend the public. Not too many irate drivers.
Right, say, "You're welcome!"
Can I just get your question?
Oh, please.
When are you gonna start the pickup, Jamie?
October twentieth.
Because I see people are putting leaves out.
And we're not gonna advertise anything, but we're gonna probably take our new one out when we see a bunch of piles, get the guys a little practice before we actually start October twentieth. But we'll pick, we pick leaves up year-round. Even right now, if they put them in the brown bags, all they gotta do is call us. We get them in a day or two. But, yeah, we'll start full bore October twentieth, and we're gonna go into December. A little later this year.
Sounds good. Thank you. Park Department, Mr. Bogueski?
So one thing I didn't have on my list, I was surprised last year and taken aback by the donation from the Fourth of July, and so I didn't know what to do with it, so I kept it all for myself. This year, I'd like to make sure that public record shows that Fire Department gets that check so that they can use it for their stuff. Because they're out there all day sweating their butts off too, so I'd like to see it go to them. And then, maybe the year after that, it becomes the police department, because they're out there too, so. We'll see.
I like that idea. Thank you, Brian.
So, for the perfect pint, like Jay said, thank you to everybody who came out to that. And for supporters of, I know this, Fire and Park are the primary beneficiaries, but it is a town-wide event that takes all of us to do, from Jamie's guys coming over and helping us put up snowfence and pound posts and set up the parking lot. They really helped us out this year. Jay's guys are out there, especially with silent auction stuff. We had police officers out there all day. Even Mike got Francois over there, and so we had additional food this year. So we had the most food vendors we've had with four of them, and they're all local folks, so we're very happy to have that. Preliminary estimates show that that was the, even though our numbers are down for attendance, it was the most successful silent auction that we had. We're looking at probably over ten thousand that we pulled just on silent auction, so. That's not counting, you know, ticket sales or anything like that, that the pint committee usually passes on to us later in the year, so. It was a very successful event. I think everybody had a good time. Went off without a hitch, as far as I know. I didn't hear any complaints, so. Thank you very much, everybody. Our next one coming up is this Friday, and that's the Boobash. That's why we do all these fundraisers and things like that, so that we can pay for community events like this. It's gonna be this Friday, four-thirty to six o'clock. We're still looking for a couple of folks that wanna do trunk-or-treat, where they set up their car and pass out candy. Or if they just want to volunteer and help out the festival. I'm asking volunteers to be there by about four o'clock, work until about six, and then the movie's inside the building this year, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Brian? Building Commissioner, Director of Development, Mr. Berry.
Where should I start? I'll do the easy one first. Ten contractors have applied and paid for their contractor licenses and met all our requirements.
Do we have a motion to approve the ten contractors that have paid all their fees and met all the requirements?
So move.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Mike? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye, all opposed. Those contractors are approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As Dan noted, the generators work great. That's because our contractor hit the power line on the stormwater project. Anyway, they work wonderfully, as they're supposed to. And I did this the other day, but I'm gonna do it again. So, Public Works guys put a ton of time into these two projects. Did a beautiful job. The paving's nice, the posts are beautiful. I mean, they did a fantastic job on that. So, kudos to all your guys over at PW.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Really appreciate it. Hawthorne Park, we've, I didn't go over there today because I had another emergency to work on, but the meter needs to get changed after the regulator's installed. I don't believe they put the regulator on it yet, and as soon as that's done, we'll get the meter changed. Then they can get it hooked up. There is a problem with the board in the generator that they have to assess and fix. So as soon as that's done, we'll get that fixed. Nipco's finally done with everything on the two lift station generators, so now it's just get the generator started, fired up, tested, fence it, finish those off, and we're done.
Beautiful.
Finally, yeah.
Finally.
Lori alluded to Waverly Road, so the reason that's been closed a couple days, and I have lots of pictures, because you don't want to go down there and look in the hole, but there's a lot of utilities that run through there. So every time you dig a hole, something else pops up that you didn't know about. So today, there was an unmarked fiber line from Frontier, right where our giant structure goes. So we got Frontier guys, came out, we assessed that, found that there was no way to move it, and we scooted over about three feet with our structure, then spent half the day trying to find another piece of pipe, because nobody had the pipe. We got a piece of pipe, so that should be closed off, closed back up and open. If it's not open right now, it should be open shortly. It might be open now. I didn't, is it open? Okay. So, Dire Construction went above and beyond on that to get that finished, so. That's been, that's been a hard egg for a couple days trying to get that done. But now that that part's connected, the next part, as Lori said, I keep her up to date. We had to redesign the connector to the pond that's next door with all the houses, and then Mr. Markovich will install his standpipe and pipe that connects it. And then all that water that's always flooding the road will route through our new storm. So that's the last piece that has to get done. We've got a few inlets that we have to raise and stuff like that. They're not quite where they're supposed to be. But that's been a challenge to get through the utilities over there, so. Kudos to Dire. Dire's been fantastic. Really good at problem-solving and really helped us out. And that's the last road closure until we pave it, so as soon as we get ready to pave that, we'll close it again, pave it, and be done, but that's been a tough one. So I'm very happy that that's almost completed. And then I'll wait till we get down further for the other stuff, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on past old business, since we have none, onto new business. We have determination, a petition twenty-five dash zero-three, rezoning request from R one to R three at U S twenty and forty-nine. This was before the Advisory Plan Commission for a public hearing a couple of weeks ago. And after the public hearing, the Plan Commission sent over to the council an unfavorable recommendation to not rezone from R one to B three and to keep it as is. I trust everyone has read that report, and I just want to say again how grateful I am. I normally try to make it to those meetings, and I wasn't able to that night, but I got to watch it on YouTube anyway. And I sometimes, oftentimes complain about laws that the state makes that harm us or don't consider how we have to follow them, but I will say in this case, oh, thank you, State of Indiana, for making this mandatory, because I don't think I would have approved that much money for this equipment if we weren't required to, and I'm so grateful to have it. So that's just a side note. I'm so grateful to have it. So, do we have a?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Plan Commission's advisement and deny the petition to rezone the property.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have any further comments? Okay, Corinne, would you mind, please, taking a roll call vote for this?
Don Kraft?
Aye.
Kelly Karaman?
Aye.
Accepting the Plan Commission's recommendations.
James Burge?
Aye.
Bill Lopez?
Aye.
Laura Madigan?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is Westchester Township's MOU, their memorandum of understanding regarding Township Roads and Infrastructure Fund. So, the MOU that they sent us, Corinne, am I correct, that they sent us the county's letter for signature as opposed to the town of Porter's letter?
Yeah, I noticed that yesterday, that the signature line says County of Porter instead of Town of Porter.
So, we can't sign it tonight anyway, but we've got a couple of options. So last night, the town of Chesterton had their MOU up on their agenda, and they decided to reject it and go back to the township's trustee board and ask them to recalculate the funds so that they're distributed proportionately based on their end-dot road inventory. There are six municipalities within the township that the funds are being divided up between. They are not legally required to divide them up proportionately. They chose to divide them up evenly between all six. And so, last night Chesterton voted to reject that MOU and go back and negotiate with them and see if they would recalculate. We can do the same thing. We can acknowledge that they're doing that and just wait, or we can choose to go ahead and sign the corrected letter when they send it to us, if we request that, depending on how the council wants to move forward.
How will that affect it if it's on the actual, instead of just?
So, I heard, I heard that it's around fifty-two to fifty-five hundred dollars total this year, right? But.
Our portion?
No, total, divided up between the six municipalities, right? One of them is the city of Portage, because within Westchester Township, there's a little strip that is in Portage. And then there's Burns Harbor, you know, yada, yada. And so if, right now, how that's divided up is, I think, what the numbers that I heard was approximately nine hundred dollars per municipality. So we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, you know, divided up evenly, you know, Chesterton would take the lion's share of that. We would take the second-largest piece with, you know, the smaller organizations taking much smaller. You know, what I heard discussed at the meeting last night was that for them, it was less about the money and more about the principle. It doesn't matter how much money's on the table this year, or next year, or the year after. It might be zero dollars next year. It might be significantly more. They believe that it's appropriate to, you know, because they're not impossible numbers to calculate, because we already have an end-dot-street inventory.
Right.
So, that was their argument, that it's not hard to figure out the numbers and just divide it up proportionately.
Seems like a more fair way of doing it, based on total amount of roads.
More equitable, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
We wouldn't necessarily be hurt. If anything, we might be helped. Because at this rate, Portage is gonna get an equal share, even though they only have a tiny section.
Right, right.
So, if we table it, wait till they resolve that, then we can readdress. Because if we sign it now, they change it for Chesterton, we'd have to redo it anyway, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and we can't, we don't have the correct letter tonight now, anyway. So, do we want to just sit and wait quietly, or should we shoot over, ask our clerk treasurer to shoot over an email expressing our, you know, request to recalculate?
I would.
Yes?
That's where I'm at.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's the right thing to do.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to table the MOU per, for the negotiations?
I'll make that motion.
Well, I think you want the motion to.
What do we want?
To mimic what Chesterton did, don't we? That's not, we're not tabling it, we're actually.
Sure, one of them, one of them sounds a little bit more aggressive than the other. You know what I'm saying?
Well, if we table it, you're doing nothing.
Right.
If we're asking Corinne to send a letter over, then we're rejecting the MOU and asking them to reevaluate it.
Then maybe that's the motion we want.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I think I heard here, but.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
All right, a motion to reject and request a reevaluation.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Do we have a second? Is that Don? Thank you, Don. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, thank you very much, Corinne, for drafting that email.
You're welcome.
All right, next we've got twenty-twenty-six dash one, our Community Crossings Matching Grant Application and Financial Commitment. This was recently amended. Mike Berry? When you're ready, sir.
Twenty-third Street, we're splitting with Chesterton from Wood Street to Washington Street, because that's a shared road. And then we have Oak Street and Dunes View Lane, I think it is, which we never paved when we did Bailey Town, because we didn't have enough funds to pave those last two roads in our pile. So, Dunes View comes off twelve, and it's in pretty bad shape. Oak Street's not as bad, but it's connected to it. I got a call today from a, or an email, sorry, through our new website, from a homeowner adjacent to Oak Street. And John and Public Works went out and looked at it also with the complaint. But there's a pipe there that's too. the complaint, but there's a pipe there that's too small, so I threw that in there at the last minute to replace the pipe with larger culvert, so that it doesn't flood his yard, and so that'll get solved. And then the other amendment on Twenty-third Street, Chesterton brought up adding striping. There's no striping on the road now, but we'll put a center line and edge lines on it, the same as Woodlawn, which makes the road better, so I amended it to show those couple items. Our side of the street on Twenty-third, we're also going to add that sidewalk in front of the property at the corner of Marquette and...
Oh.
And Twenty-third, so we can extend the sidewalk, cross Marquette with a proper crossing, and that's all connected together, so that'll finish that section off. So we're going to calculate in the next few days the split with Chesterton, so it's splitting everything, except we added the sidewalk on our part of the road, and then we'll figure out, you know, which striping is whose, and we'll split that up. It's approximately thirty-four thousand dollars each with the match, and then I'll send that, Chesterton will put an MOU together for that, and do the same as we did on Woodlawn Street. And when we're done, we're below our target for paving this year, which is fine, because we can save some money that way and just bank it for the next month.
Okay.
But that's, that's what that's, that financial letters were. You can read the, I didn't run a copy, if you want to read the numbers off, you can...
Yeah, so I have, um... For mill and fill asphalt four inches, sidewalk and ADA ramps, pavement striping, and storm sewer replacement at locations noted, total cost estimated four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. The twenty percent local match would be ninety thousand, one-oh-seven, and eighty cents. Total CCMG funds requested three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. So thank you for presenting that, and does the council have a motion to approve this so that I can sign it?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Do you have any questions for Mike on the project? Nope, all right, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that's approved, thank you. That, I believe, was our last order of business. Council comments?
I do have one. For the residents of the Town of Porter, who live east of Waverly, their state representative, Pat Boy, is retiring as of tomorrow, and on Saturday, there will be a new state rep who will probably be Randy Novak, who's currently on the LaForte County Council. So for those residents, if you have some issue to take to the state, they'll have a new representative.
Thank you, sir, for the update, appreciate it. Anyone else? I have one thing to ask the council about. You all should have received a report from Michael Berry regarding some privately-owned roads within the neighborhood of Porter Beach. There are a few of them at different times over the years. Each of them, the owners have come to the town to inquire about what it would take to turn those roads over to the town for ownership and future maintenance. These roads obviously do not meet town standards, there's, there's a lot of individual challenges that are different for each of these roads. Our residents that own and maintain these roads would really just like a clear list of if there's anything that they can do to bring their road up to an acceptable point that we would accept it as a public road, they would like to know what that is. So I would like to know how the council feels about turning that over to our tech committee and asking them to review it for us, right? Because, for example, one of the roads is, the slope is twenty-two percent, and our code says no more than eight percent. Now, another road is only eleven percent. Well, where do we draw the line? I don't feel like that's my job, right? I don't run any of these trucks, I don't do any of the maintenance, so I would feel much more comfortable saying to the residents, if you do at least this much, this is your bare minimum line, if you can reach this standard, then we will consider accepting the road and then taking over responsibility for maintaining it. If we do, I don't know. What did you guys think about that?
So what, you're going to have the tech committee review it?
I would like to send it to the tech committee and task them with reviewing it and providing a recommendation of basic minimum standards that those roads would have to meet if they wanted to be considered for, you know, basically being donated to the town and us accepting ownership and then responsibility for future maintenance.
Well, I would, I would be for that, then you can give the residents the reasons or something to see where they're at with it.
Jamie?
Don't we already have standards?
We do have standards, yeah, for new construction.
So we could just turn those over.
I mean, if that's, if the tech committee sits down and says, hey, you know, it's not possible for this road to be one-hundred percent compliant, but if it got to eighty percent, because it's an already-established road, we're not going to build any new roads below this standard, but, you know, we think that we could work with eighty percent, we're not going to risk, you know, losing a truck off of the side of this steep slope, because one doesn't exist, whatever the parameters are. If tech says, yeah, the bare minimum standards are what's already in the code, no less, no dice, right, then that's what the tech committee says. But it's a question that has been asked numerous times and not been definitively answered, and so I think that our residents deserve a thoroughly thoughtful and definitive answer.
Yeah, I just, I, yeah, I just, I feel like, you know, if we're going to have standards, we ought to follow, and otherwise, you know, just, just say, you know, bring what you think is acceptable, and we'll look at it, which, you know, to me, you're kind of defeating your own, your own standards, you know what I mean? And I think it'd be cost prohibitive even to get it close, but, but my opinion is if it doesn't meet the standards, why would we want to take that on, when we know we're going to have problems?
Right.
Well, we're not suggesting the town bring them to standard, we're suggesting the residents bring them to standard, right, correct?
Yeah.
So we're just giving them a definitive answer, like Laura said, showing them where it's at, but yeah, we're not taking any action.
And if the tech committee stands firmly on the minimum standards that are already in our town code, and that's what everybody votes on and says, yep, that's it, we can't, we can't squeeze it any tighter than that, then that's what they decide, and that's that. But if they say, you know what, like, yeah, it's a dead end, but everything else fits, and we've got other dead ends, and we make it work, we will accept this dead end, but no new dead ends are allowed to be constructed in town. That's an example of, you know, a clear line that I would like, please, and thank you, to have written for our residents that live on those few roads, so that, so that ten years from now, they don't ask again. Because that's really what it is, it's like, they'll bring it up, and they'll be like, no, and then it'll go away, and there isn't a clearly defined, nope, this decision was made.
Yeah, I just, in the past, the town has let people build things from standard and then taken them over, and then it's the town's problem, and the town doesn't have money, the developer made money off of that, and the town's taking on the problem.
That's one of our biggest problems with the stormwater board.
Yeah, I agree with that, and like I said, if that's, if that's the recommendation that the tech committee finalizes and votes on, then that's what we take.
And he's on the tech committee's.
I know. So I thank you for giving us a preview.
Sorry for interjecting there.
No, it's good, it's good.
I feel strongly on that issue.
I don't disagree with you, sir, yep.
That's okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I would agree, you have to give people the ability to know what that goalpost is, and if they can meet it, fantastic, and at least they know what it is. It's the least, minimum we can do, to at least establish that, so they know what they have to deal with, if they can tackle and get it accomplished or not. And then I agree with Jamie, I mean, there's, there's standards there, but, but giving that tech committee the ability to look, just to make sure, you know, there isn't something that we might be able to work with them on, given the roads existed before we put the overlay on it, so, yeah, so I agree with you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else?
Five, five of the six tech members are in this room.
I know.
So now you know we're going to begin to meet again.
So thank you all for meeting and discussing it, like I said, whatever you guys decide, I will thank you for.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you!